Good morning, I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council, and we're conducting our today's work session via teleconference. And this meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live, and will be available later on on Channel 99 and AT&amp;T U-verse and the city's YouTube. As a reminder, this is to let you know that the work sessions give the council an opportunity to review items today on today's agenda, and as well as any ordinances and resolutions that have been routed for the council's consideration. And these meetings are informal and no official action are taken. If you'll look at your agenda for today, we have an update from COVID-19. We have two items that are on for unfinished business. We have a resolution or an abatement of nuisance in District 3 that was tabled for 30 days. And we have a resolution that was ordering abatement of nuisance that was tabled in District 7 for 30 days. And this is, the recommendation from the Building Department is to table the resolution for another 30 days. But this is for item B on 2441 Fairview Road. Are there any questions?
Let me, yes ma'am, let me say something about 2441 Tabor Road. They're in the process of building and brick in that house. To give them 30 days is not enough. So I'm going to time, I'm going to ask for a 90-day and give them three months to finish that house.
Councilman Reed, that's kind of, you know, we've said before, that's kind of, we can give them 30 days. Let's do 30 days first, and then we can do another 30 days. Because if that's the case, we're not doing it like we did others. Okay? Let's be fair, let's be fair, and let's be consistent. Huh?
That's fine, that's absolutely fine.
Okay, I'm just saying, let's be fair. Well, we just need to be consistent on how we do things. Because if we're going to give one person 90 days, and then we're not going to give another person but 30 days, then, you know, that'll show up on us later on.
You know I'm special.
We could, we should do that indefinitely, table indefinitely.
No, 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 I don't want to do it indefinitely, no.
Madam President, item 8A will not require any action by the council. It has been abated by the owner, that's in District 3.
Okay, all right.
See, I told you I'm special.
That's the reason why I have to correct you, because you are special. Okay, at this time, we have some items in our pre-council folder that was rerouted from the mayor's office to the council. And so let's look at our first, let's look at our first item. And this is a resolution ordering a 60-day extension of lease agreement with the Gaston Warehousing and Company. And this is for a portion of building in T4, Section A, B, and C. And we'll ask Nick Hall if he'll come on and sort of give us an update on that, please.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
We've had a request from Rodney Austin to, they're in the process of finishing their warehouse over in Atala. And they've asked for additional 60 days in order to complete the building. And so we've requested a 60-day extension added to their lease that was set to expire on January 31st. So he's asked for 60 days to extend that lease.
And Nick, for the purpose of both the council and anybody that may be looking in on this meeting, could you give a little bit of the background that helps people understand why we're even engaged in a lease agreement with Gaston Warehouse?
Well, Councilman Williams, the Gaston Warehousing had been with us for a good many years. And they had actually moved all of their materials over to their warehouse in Atala. And then the fire came in, and they were needing a place to stay in business. So therefore, they had came to the council requesting a year's lease. The council granted that lease agreement. And pretty much, they're in the process of being building their building over there. But I doubt they've run into some issues or COVID-related or something. So he's asked us for additional 60 days to help them till they can complete their building.
All right, thank you, Nick. I always like to highlight, you know, the fact that it is rare, and people like Councilman Cannon and Councilman Reed and Iva that have been around a while can speak to this. But it's rare when we're called on as a municipality that we don't step up and support. And I think this is just another example of when we're being called on, we're being asked to support other municipalities. We continue to step up and be supportive. So thanks for the update, Nick.
Hey Nick, what's your level of confidence that this is going to be kind of a one-and-done thing? I mean, obviously, I know things can happen in construction, and especially with this time of year, and we still are dealing with COVID issues. I mean, do you think this 60 days will get them to the finish line? Or do you anticipate maybe having to have another one of these extensions?
Well, I'm not sure on that. But he feels pretty confident that they can complete it within the 60 days.
Okay.
But if not, we may have to come back. But I think he just asked for 60 days, and so therefore, that's what we've asked for a extension on.
Yeah, there's no, I mean, there's no way to know, obviously. I was just curious if that was the plan, or if we actually thought they were going to be out of there in 60 days.
Well, okay.
Nick, Nick?
Yes.
I went by there yesterday, and they've got the walls up just about. And so everything looks like to me it's probably going to be inside work for now. It's what it looked like yesterday, because they've come a long way here in the last couple of weeks on it.
Yeah, he may have not needed the full 60, but rather than, I just told him, you know, I just didn't want to bring this back up in three weeks. So he said he would just rather have 60 days just to make sure.
Hey Nick, I have a question. If he doesn't use the whole 60 days, you all won't make him pay the rest of that, right?
Well, there's a separation of the lease agreement. He'd have to give us 30 days notice. And so he would be responsible to pay according to the lease agreement. That's in all our lease agreements.
Are there any other questions? Okay, our next item is a resolution authorizing a special use permit for T-Mobile to modify their equipment at an existing wireless communication telecommunications facility that's located at 909 Fairview Drive. Is our representative available to speak?
Yes ma'am, this is David Amet with CMS. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes ma'am, this is a request by T-Mobile to modify their existing equipment. That is, as you said, located at 909 Fairview Drive, Gaston. This is a 250-foot self-support tower, and T-Mobile is currently providing service at 155 feet. They currently have nine antennas and three feed lines, and they're requesting to remove those nine antennas. They'll be adding back six antennas, so it'll actually be going down by three. So there'll be a total of six antennas and one feed line. And this is a technology upgrade. And CMS has reviewed the application and recommends approval by the council.
Any questions from council members?
Madam President, I'm not a council member, but I do have a question to the tower load.
Okay. Go ahead.
I understand the antenna number will change, but I wanted to ask David, would that mean the weight limit would change? We need to make sure we don't exceed the weight limit on it.
Right, no, this will, they have, in the study, have approved all of that. So all of that was permitted, and there will be no issue there.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, our next item is authorizing agreement with MLFLW LLC. And this is to sponsor a fishing tournament in the amount of $1,500 to be held at Gaston Coussau Landing on June 26, 2021. Wellington, Jen Wellington, are you available?
Yes ma'am, this is, like you said, with the MLFLW. This is an adult fishing tournament, bass fishing tournament. And they are expecting and have, in the past, brought in about 125 to 140 boats. This is a one-day tournament, but this group does pre-fish the Coussau River prior to coming in for this tournament.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Yeah, Jen, I just want to know why all these organizations have such long names? I mean, they gotta get tired of filling out applications. I swear, every single one of these organizations got nine words in their title.
You know, they're all major league, fishing league, bass league tournaments. It's kind of like your NSA's, USSAs, everybody just likes to have a big name.
Hey, changing the subject here, Jen. We already got some softball tournaments lined up from the states and stuff. Did we get any this year?
We did not get a state, but we do have a Southeast World Series that will be coming in in July. Well, I think we have a baseball state. We did not get a softball state this year. We have opened up our online registration for youth baseball. Coussau League is doing the softball. And we hope to be partnering with them for the rec ball, for the softball and baseball leagues. But we do have a full calendar, starting in February, going all the way to November for youth baseball and softball and adult tournaments on the weekend.
Well, how are we doing on the, you said Coussau Valley League was doing the girls softball? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Have we got any teams in the city of Gaston in that league?
We have tried.
Are we going to?
Right. The past two or three years, we have tried to start just softball teams from just the city of Gaston with, you know, the tee ball, the coach pitch, and all that, just for softball. And we have not been successful of getting enough kids in Gaston to register to have a full team in one age group. A lot of these girls are already signing up with, or in the past, they were signing up with Coussau Valley, and they would get on other teams from other areas. We have really tried, we publicized in the schools and everything the past, like I said, two to three years. And the girls are just not coming out and registering like the boys do. We haven't got an answer, but we are looking into starting up what they call a rec ball league for boys and girls, which will be our little ones, our three-to-four-year-olds. If we can get the girls involved in that age, maybe they'll start growing, and we can have our full-on little league softball here in Gaston, where we can partner and play against teams from Southside, Glencoe, Hoakes Bluff, and Atala, and all the other areas.
What about the new Gaston City softball coach? Have you met her? Can you tell us anything about her? Is she trying to get some people to start playing in, around here, the little girls? Because if you don't have a program to build from, I don't see, how are you going to have your thing in high school if you don't have something to build from?
We have spoke mainly through email, and we have not met. COVID is putting a strain on us meeting, and her getting out into the community and promoting softball like that. But I know that she is trying, and we are trying also. But with the restrictions and where we're at right now, it is difficult to go out and get a group together during this time. We're hoping, you know, we're playing our part, and, you know, we hope that that changes in the near future. It just depends on how COVID's going and where our guidelines are set.
You know, there's a ton of girls in Gaston that play softball. My granddaughter has to go to Tuscaloosa to play, to practice. She plays out of a team there. And I've been harping on this for five or six years, trying to see how we can get a girls softball started in Gaston, because, you know, we got the high school that has kids, and we've got all these travel ball teams. And we should be trying to get some travel ball tournaments in here for these kids, you know, like that in softball, because that's a lot of money, those travel softball teams. I go about a couple of times a month when my granddaughter's playing out of town, and they're bringing a lot of money into that. And that's why I was wondering if we could see about trying to get some of those tournaments or something. I know it's too late for this year, can we try for next year?
No, we've already got NSA. We've got NSA softball with tournaments, and we have their Southeast World Series that we will be hosting here in Gaston. And like I said, we have tried our hardest to get the girls to come. Sounds like your granddaughter must be on an elite team if she's going all the way to Tuscaloosa to play. I know there's some great teams in that area and all over, and we would love to have that here. So we're trying our best. Like I said, we opened it up. We actually were less than some of the other surrounding communities. And we're going to figure out a way how to get in touch with these girls and get them playing here in Gaston in rec ball. And, you know, hopefully, these travel ball teams will sign up here when we host our tournaments on the weekend.
I know we've got a pretty good 10- and 12-year-old girls basketball league. I know we've got that around here. But, you know, I just think that we're missing something there with the girls softball. That's just my opinion totally.
Well, we actually got great teams for girls and boys, and six and under eight, and under 10, and under 12, and under, and a varsity league in our rec ball team season this year. So we've got some great athletes in the area. And again, we want to support everybody that's wanting to learn a new sport and get introduced, and we're doing our best. We just got to have the kids to sign up when registration opens.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wellington. Our last item is an authorized agreement with Sedwick Claim Management Service and Company for Workman's Compensation Claim Administration Service for a two-year term. Is Ms. Spurling on?
I am.
Okay, you give us a little background on this?
We have been using Sedwick for these services for many, many years. Their name has changed a few times. This is just, every two years, we renew our agreement with them for our claims processing. And this is just another, it's that two-year mark.
First, I want to apologize to you for not getting to you before the meeting, because I really meant to ask you this offline. But is, when we determine to renew with Sedwick, do we engage in any way in a competitive scenario? Like an RFP?
We did not this year. We have, and honestly, I can't speak about what happened in the past, because as you know, that would have been Jan that handled that. Even if we had wanted to this year, I don't know that it would have been possible. Just because of everything with the COVID and me being the only person in the department, there would have just been no way to get that going.
I understand.
And in the past, when Jan has, from my understanding, when Jan did speak with other companies, Sedwick always came in at the lowest bid for the same service. And that was just my understanding. I wasn't involved at that point.
Well, just, you know, just keep that in mind going forward. I mean, and I agree with you, it's probably difficult to do any of that kind of stuff right now. But let's make sure that we hold them to a standard of inclusion and diversity amongst their adjuster ranks. You know, they generally don't have a problem finding female adjusters, because they're kind of in abundance. But, you know, I'd like their ranks to some degree anyway, especially the folks that are supporting our account. Let's make sure that they reflect the diversity within City Hall.
I understand, and I'd be happy to talk with you at any time if you want to stop by.
Okay, thank you, Stacy.
Are there any?
While we got you on the phone, would you maybe want to elaborate a little bit on our task card, what you've run into this year so far, and how you're correcting that, what we talked about this morning?
Well, I think that what you're talking about is with the health insurance prescription drugs is what we were talking about this morning. As far as tasks, what we discussed was reimbursements for, yeah, we've talked about reimbursements for the pulse oximeter and the thermometer. And those are, I'm going to look into that, pardon?
I was mainly wanting you to tell everybody about the trouble you're running with the task card, about the $500 we talked to about this morning, and let everybody know that you're working on that. Because you'll probably get some of your costs done if you tell them about that, probably.
Okay, well, that was with the Optimum RX prescription card, not the task card.
Oh, okay. But you said you're going to work on that, right? And everything, get that took care of?
Right, I had an employee call yesterday that their pharmacy told them they had a $500 deductible on some prescription medications. We don't have a $500 deductible on anything in our plan. So that is something I was going to look into to find out where that confusion came in. It does appear that they have made some changes to the prescription drug tiers, where it may have, something may have been a brand drug before, and it may not even be covered anymore under our plan, or it may have gone down to a less expensive tier.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we have a citizen request. Robert Avery Jobs.
Mr. Avery, you should be unmuted now.
He's not, Mike.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to be here, particularly with special Ben Reed. I don't know if you realize how that sounded, that he is special.
Well, you know, Robert, I appreciate it.
But anyway, I wanted to come to the council this morning about some jobs. As you know, when I was here before, we talked about opportunities in our city. And yet, we still have a group of people who are, I don't know if I could say the H-word, bent on stopping jobs from coming into our city. And I have a serious problem with that, particularly when we have problems with unemployment in this city. I did some research since I've been there, since I was accused of not having accurate information. How many of you have seen the email that's going around from the concerned citizens of Gaston? Have any of you all seen that email? It talks about an individual who owned businesses here, and I don't want to get into name-calling. But I did some research as to why that individual will be spending all of this money to keep this business out. I found that he met with several groups to recruit them to come in and help them fight you all, and help them get you guys to vote it down. He met with the Black Lives Matter, the Black Coalition, the Gaston Freedom Fighters, and several other groups, and asked for their support. The question I have now is, why didn't he and his followers support them when they was marching on City Hall to get some things done there? The same individual also promised them that he would set up an apprentice program, and that he was going to set up a scholarship. Well, we've been down that road before with people promising they're going to set up apprentice programs, and they're going to do scholarships. I reminded the group, that I think he gave the University of Alabama about a million dollars for their scholarship fund. And yet, he put no money amount on offering them a scholarship fund. I haven't gotten back to them, so I don't know if they went back and requested at least a million dollars for their scholarship fund, since he wants them to join up and they'd be partners. But the same individual owned businesses here. And at that council meeting, he bought in several professional groups to complain about that plant and the fact that it might create a problem in our waterways and stuff like that. Well, that same individual got cited from ADM for messing up our waterway. I just have a problem with hypocrites. And then they go out in the community like the guy up in Washington, and they get people all fired up about something, and people don't know what that individual is all about. And it's obvious that individual has some issues. And I don't know the mayor there. I understand he tried to purchase that property. I don't know if that's true or not, but if it's a lie, that's the way I heard. And so people need to know why folks are doing what they're doing. One of the things that I talked to a couple of their supporters, and they jumped on me about the plant coming in, and they said, "Well, the plant is going to bring in a lot of illegals." Well, I think we have E-Verify here in this city, around this country. So if they can pass E-Verify, then they can get a job. But as I requested from the council, and I'm going to request it again, if you approve this plant, put a clause in there that the citizens of Gaston will have first shot at those jobs. Then you go to the east side of the county, because it's the west side and the south side of the county where all these complaints are coming from. And if they don't want the jobs here, then they shouldn't be able to get those jobs. And the last thing I want to say is that that individual has an arterial motive, because I saw a number of his postings where they had vacancies, and I think they were offering $11 and some an hour. Well, it's my understanding that this new plant is going to be offering $15 an hour. So you need to find out what the motive is as to why this person is spending all this money and ripping up all of this confusion. And people out there need to know what's going on. You need to do your research, and I've done that. And so I asked this council to please, ma'am, and please, sir, bring those jobs to our community, we need them bad. And with that, I'll shut up, and I'll let special Ben Reed, if you got any questions, ask a question.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. And if there's nothing else, we'll just take five minutes, and then we'll start without, pardon?
I have something.
Okay.
Madam President, I see here where the resolution agreement with Sedwick Claims Management needs approval by today. That's what it said on my paperwork. That'd be under new business. I didn't know if you had somebody to bring that up under new business today. I might have missed it.
Did I miss that too, Ms. Alva?
You didn't give no?
There was a notation at the top of the route sheet that said needs approval 11221. I'm not sure who specified that, but that does appear on the route sheet.
Okay, all right. Councilman Cannon, you want to bring that up?
Yes, ma'am, there's no objections, I will.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any objections to this coming up? All right, councilman, was it worthy that you had something?
Yes, I would like to ask that we go into executive session to speak on the character of two individuals.
Councilman Worthy, this is Michael. I'm not sure that we have the capacity to go into an executive session via Zoom. It might be able to be done, but technically, I'm not sure that we can do that.
I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's possible.
Okay, I think we would lose, uh, our connection with, uh, Facebook Live and probably others if we go into, uh, if we're going to executive session.
My, my concern with that, Councilman Worthy, is that, um, I'm not aware of a way to, to remove everybody from the meeting, like if we were doing this in person, and then bring them back in.
No, no problem.
Is there any, any other, uh, comments? Well, let's take a break and come back at 11:15. All right, well, we'll get, we'll get started, and good morning again to Facebook Live and Comcast Channel 99 and AT&amp;T U-verse and the City of Gaston YouTube. Uh, I'm president of the Gaston City Council, and we are to begin our meeting. This meeting of the Gaston City Council would now come to order, and the chair calls on City Clerk Alva Nelson for the roll call.
Thank you, you're on mute, Alva.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Worthy?
He might be on mute.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead our invocation this morning.
Thank you. Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we just come to you today just thanking you for all that you do for us as individuals and as the city. God, we ask now for clarity of mind and for wisdom to make decisions that will be pleasing unto you. We ask you for blessings and protection on all of our citizens and all of our families. God, as we're in this season of, of pandemic, uh, we just ask for calm and we ask for, uh, your protection. God be with us now as we do the business of the city. Christ stand we pray. Amen.
Amen. Uh, at this time, we will have, uh, Ms. Deborah Gaither, Emergency Management Agency Director. She's coming to us today with some glad news.
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I think the first thing that, um, I need to do is say thank you to a lot of people that were of assistance to the Alabama Department of Public Health, specifically the Edwah County Health Department and this agency last Thursday, as anywhere from 450 to 500 citizens were vaccinated on that day. Um, we had, um, employees from the Gaston Building and Maintenance Department, Gaston Public Works, Gaston PD, Gaston Fire EMS, um, Edwah County Sheriff's Department, um, the Health Department, of, of course, CERT members, um, EMA volunteers, um, and some unsuspecting, unintended team members were Buffalo Wild Wings and Ronnie Watkins Ford. They, um, they accidentally were impacted by, um, the events of the day, and, and we did, um, uh, really hate that for both of their businesses, but they became a team member in doing that. And, um, we just want to tell everybody to give Ronnie Watkins Ford and, and, um, Buffalo Wild Wings an extra pat on the back when you see one of their employees, because they, um, they had to put up with a lot that day, and we appreciate them. Um, a lot of people have asked, you know, about, um, anybody that was vaccinated, did they have a, um, reaction? There were minimal, um, reactions. There were, um, a few that were, you know, of mention, but none that had to, um, be transported to the hospital, to our knowledge. So we've tried to keep, um, up with that so that everyone would know how that went. I think that we talked the big numbers last week, the 4.9 million, and at that point in time, there was like 226,000, uh, vaccines that were distributed. At this point, there has still only been, uh, 271,925 vaccines distributed across, um, the state of Alabama. Um, a lot of those are still in place and have not been, um, given to an individual, and it's because of manpower. It's because, um, you know, a lot of our nurses are sick. They're on quarantine. Uh, we even, we have hospitals here that are, um, help, helping to, um, give those out to our healthcare providers and our, our first responders. Everybody is stressed. Everybody is doing the best that we can on a first run of an unknown. Um, I just want to ask everybody that comes out, you know, to be patient. The majority of the citizens that came out were patient with us. Uh, we had a few that, um, were not happy with us, and, um, a couple that thought they could use their car as a, um, a device to show that. You can't do that. We have to have patience. And to pull this off each time that we try to do it, we have to have understanding and for people to be, um, more mindful of their rage. We can't do that. Um, the people that were there and working have worked tirelessly to try and get it to that point. Um, so we want to ask our citizens, you know, please respect those that are there and working and be patient with them. Um, they're tired too. I know, um, our citizens are tired, but they're tired too. Let's just be patient, um, with each other. I think some things that we need to address today, looking at the website, if you go to the G E C E M A website, and then go to the, um, COVID-19 link, the, um, red COVID-19 link, you're going to find the numbers. And the numbers, um, speak loudly today, but one that I want to address is the, um, number of deaths that went up drastically. It's 125. We did talk with, um, London Pierce, our county, uh, coroner, and, um, he verified that number is correct, but he did state that there was a delay in getting all those numbers there. So there might have been several days, like a data dump. Um, so this, this wasn't all in one night or one weekend, but we're at 125 deaths in Edwah County from COVID-19. So we, um, need to continue to watch what we, um, are doing and how we're reacting and responding to, um, this pandemic. Another number we need to look at is our 14-day test positive rate did rise again. Um, we kind of leveled off last week, but it's on the rise again to 27.27. Um, with the number of, um, that is in the death rate column, we have averaged a death rate of 3.14 within a seven-day period. And we believe that is partially elevated due to that data dump. So we're not going, going to nail down that number. We're going to wait and give it another look next week and see if it's any better. Um, the total overall test positive rate is, um, 18.97%. That's, that's up. I also want to, um, look at the, um, Edwah County overall COVID risk rate, and it's at severe level still. Our daily new cases, um, are up by 109.9. Um, that's an extreme level. Positive test rate overall for all of Edwah County is at a critical level. Um, the current, um, COVID information page is updated, um, today, and you'll see that on that page, when you go there, each, um, box has a scroll down, so you can find more information, um, than what we currently, than what we had in the past couple of weeks on there. It shows a graph of, of, um, different cumulative cases and test numbers that, um, you should take a look at, I believe. Also, um, our schools are back into, um, service this week, so we will also be watching our school, um, COVID-19 data each time that we can. Just, um, make sure you check that out daily. On the, um, website resources and the social media page, uh, Alabama Department of Public Health, more specifically Edwah County Department of Public Health, has a, um, flyer about how to, to schedule an appointment by county. And it's for the northeastern district of Alabama, and Edwah County has a telephone number that they encourage healthcare workers, first responders, to include law enforcement and fire departments, and people over 75, 75 or older, um, to call this number. It's 256-569-8150 to make an appointment. There'll be no walk-ups at all, no drive-ins at all. This will be by appointment only at the Edwah County Health Department. The number again for making a scheduled appointment is 256-569-8150. Um, the main switchboard number there at the Edwah County Health Department is 256-547-6311. Um, so, so far, do we have any, um, questions on or comments that we might could share with you?
Hey, Deborah, um, I've got a couple of questions. I've had several rumor mills, uh, questions about, there's, I guess, some people are saying that some of the inventory, um, i- is coming up on expiration date or something. Can you elaborate on what the shelf life is of these doses? And how much of that do you, the low number, I read a report by Bloomberg this morning, that the state of Alabama actually has the lowest per 100 resident vaccination rate in the country. How much of that is due, like you said, to our nurses being sick and, and having the staff? And how much of it is due to this holding back of the vaccinations for that second round, which I also saw the current administration maybe is updating that guidance as early as this morning about how they hold back those second doses? So can you just touch on all that stuff?
Yes, and I don't have the expiration information for you, but we can talk to some of the other, and I'll be glad to talk with public health and get the answer for that.
Yeah, but I mean, have you had any indication that the, that, that we have vials of vaccine that are actually about to go bad or expire before they're administered? I mean, is that, do you have?
I do not have that information. I have not heard that. Um, in our calls with public health, it's not been discussed. We had a call this morning at 9:00 a.m., uh, with state EMA and state public health, and they didn't give us that information, so...
Okay.
But I will ask, I will ask. But one thing I can say is, um, I think just getting our feet on the ground is the biggest problem. This is a monumental task that we've never done, um, before, and everybody playing on the same page is a big part. Um, you know, we did do the H1N1, uh, vaccines, and that, you know, that worked, but it was on a much smaller, um, grade. So I think it's the, um, mass number of people that we did not expect to want the vaccine, because when we did our survey, if you remember, our survey was very low. I shared that with you, that, you know, not many people at all. We had like 35% that wanted, um, to take the vaccine, but once it came out, that number doubled. Um, and when it doubled, then, you know, it, we realized then, okay, we got to back up and, and replan. And, um, and that's a lot of what we saw last Thursday. I mean, we, we have some lessons learned, some things that we want to incorporate into the next one that we do that's, um, uh, that's going to be that large, and I think it'll go out much faster. Our rate, um, I think the, the nurses want to improve the rate of how many they give per hour, um, from about 60 to at least 80. They're, they're working to 70 or 80 an hour. So, um, you know, for a first time, I think last Thursday, the, that type clinic, we did fair. Well, I mean, we've got some improvement to do. But, um, otherwise, you know, we just got to, to keep learning together and get it done right.
Thank you so much for all y'all.
Deborah, I had a question come in a while ago, all as to comparison of flu, same time last year as this year. Have we got any comparison in numbers?
Um, the flu count is on our, um, website also. We have that there every year. Um, in looking at that right now, it's only giving us the numbers through January the 2nd. Let me double-check that. That's right, yeah, through January the 2nd. So, um, I haven't compared last year's to this year's, um, but we can do that too, and we'll try to put that on the website so people can see it.
Yeah, I'm not trying to make light of it, or they weren't. I think they're just expecting to see how it's running, you know? Not to make light of it, because it is serious, no doubt.
Oh, absolutely, yes. And we've always done, um, the tab and the ticker on our website for flu, um, so that people could see that count every year. We've just added the, the COVID this year. So we'll update that.
Good, thank you.
If people would wear their masks, it looked like to me the flu would be down instead of up, because that would stop people from spreading the flu also.
Yeah, social distancing will also. So I hope that, um, I hope that you're right, and the numbers are down. And I hope you don't catch me in my office sometime again without my mask on. Call me on the carpet.
Hey, I have a question, though. Uh, due to the long lines, are you all considering maybe doing them at the same time but in different locations? Like, I would like to have one at Carver, like we did the one, like we did the, uh, testing. You know, you could do a drive-through, uh, vaccine, uh, shot there?
What we're using are those predetermined points of distribution that's been in our plan all along. I don't think Carver was one of those. Um, we tried to choose one location in Gaston, one location in South Side, because we have to have a pod, um, in each city. So we would have too many to do them all in one day, because it's the same people that would staff one. So we couldn't do multiples in a day. It would have to be, we do Gaston today, South Side tomorrow, um, you know, Glencoe another day. Um, so doing multiples a day would not be an option, just because of staffing. I mean, just can't do it.
Okay, thank you, De-
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaither, and if there's no, there's no other questions, then we'll go, uh, continue on our agenda. Uh, I'd like to, uh, the chair entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting that was held on January the 5th.
So move.
Move, sir.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve the minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the, to approve the, um, uh, motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of January the 1st through the 7th.
So move.
Second.
Okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Okay, we have proclamations. Uh, Mayor, is there any proclamations?
No, ma'am.
All right, then we'll continue with our unfinished business. Uh, we have a resolution. There's no, uh, council action that will be necessary regarding the resolution on 909 Pennice Street in District 3. The nuisance has already been abated by the owner. Uh, our, our next item is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 2441 Fairview Road in District 7, and this resolution was tabled for 30 days on December the 8th. Uh, what is the pleasure of the council?
Motion tabled 30 days.
Second.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilman Back.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Cannon.
Yes.
And Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries to table the resolution for thirty days.
All right. Uh, new business, is there any new business?
Yes, Ms. President, I have one. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with Cedric Claims Management Service Incorporated for a period of, for a term of two years, beginning on January the first, twenty twenty-one, and ending on December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. I'd like to ask for the man's consent for this, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Councilman Cannon.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Back.
Yes.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilman, Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Motion carries to consider this resolution today under new business.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilman Back.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Cannon.
Yes.
And Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt the resolution.
Uh, department reports, committees, boards. All right, we have remarks by the mayor and council. We'll start with mayor, do you have any comments?
Couple, yes, ma'am. About the project that we want to locate here. We got the referral from the state. All we wanted to do was let them come and present their proposals and let everybody get all the information. What happened, it got stopped by a lot of folks who were against it. And the same thing happened pretty much a long time ago when Honda was gonna move to this area, and some of the communities didn't want it, and now they're in Lincoln. And look what they do down there. They have a lot of good paying jobs with benefits. And, you know, we have a lot of opportunities. We have so much stuff that the Career Tech Center at Gas and High, we built a three million dollar building. We also have a forty-something million dollar auto technology center at Gas and State. You can go and learn how to do anything on a vehicle and have a good training skill. But, and I know I'm sort of talking around, and I'm sure I'll be number one on Facebook again this way, which I don't care. But anyway, you know, we also got elected, this group that I'm with, the clique was gonna build houses at the airport. Well, who wants houses near airport? So we stopped it, and they didn't even know there was a natural gas line running right up beside the property. And look what we have out there now. We have a lot of Honda suppliers who are furnishing jobs. You know, we just gotta take a look at things. Nobody was locked in on saying yes or no on this when it first came to town, but we never got a chance because people who want to take over and have decent jobs, they could care less what everybody else has. And that's about all I got to say, thanks.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Do, do want to just offer up an opportunity to, to remind everybody to continue to pray for our nation. We, we probably saw, you know, one of the, one of the top three most awful incidents in our great nation's history occur on last Wednesday. So just want us to continue to pray for our nation, continue to pray for the principles of this nation to continue to be, be brought forth and, and demonstrated so that we can continue to be an example for the world. We don't need to let the underbelly of our society be prominent. And so again, let's continue to pray for our nation and continue to, to continue to move forward. And let's hope for some new beginnings and a more tame political environment. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Worthy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, Madam President. Go along with what Councilman William said, I agree a hundred percent. And, and people see us a double standard in this country. And between the way blacks are treated and whites are treated. And, and, and people on both sides are getting tired of it. And so, yeah, let's just pray for our country. Let's pray for the new administration that's coming in because there's a lot of threats against them, the new administration. So, and pray for our police officers because they have a hard enough time, but they dealing with a pretty stressful situation. Protecting the Capitol, and then they made mistakes, but they are learning from those mistakes. That investigation will go forth, and hopefully, we won't see any of that around here. But I, I want to talk about something that, no matter what side you're on with this plant, if a city council put in writing, then ask for a resolution to be written up, it should be written up. The mayor's office should not stop that resolution from being written. Now, Mayor, you said a couple of weeks ago, or three weeks ago, that you didn't have a vote. So, and I understand that you don't. So why would you stop the resolution from being written up by our attorney?
Well, one reason, a lot of people on the council wasn't, didn't know about it, and they didn't want to be surprised, is what some of them told me.
Well, they'd be surprised if not, we would have informed them of the resolution. When you all did the resolution on the monuments, none of us knew about it, and you let that go through. You didn't, y'all didn't inform us about that. You didn't give us a, an opportunity, as Lee said, to look at the wording in that resolution. What I'm about is being fair. That's all. And, and it's spelled out right here, "No ordinance or resolution shall be prepared for presentation to the council unless it is requested in writing by a council member." It doesn't say two council members or three council members, but you have, we had two council members that requested it. So that's all I'm saying. We, we have to be fair. Let the resolution be written up by the attorney. If that's the case, then if the attorney works at your pleasure, then the city council need to have our own attorney.
Okay.
Let, let them all.
That's all I'm gonna say about that today. But I will have some more to say.
Okay.
In the near future.
Let the council all take right now who they, what they want to do. All they can say, what you want to do. Right, go ahead and do it now, or let y'all all know what's coming up, or it happens.
Mayor, I'd just like to say, if I could, we all agreed upon it maybe four or five weeks back, that we would wait after this ADEM hearing, and it's gonna be the January the twenty-sixth, at that, that night, I think it's at six o'clock the hearing is. And we all agreed as a council as a whole that we was gonna wait to after that before we presented anything. No.
That's where I was on it.
That's not true. I did not agree to that.
Oh, so you was, you was only?
What, matter of fact.
Let me say something in here. Mr. Worthy, I called you on the telephone, and you totally agreed to wait till that date? Absolutely. Now, if you say you didn't, you're lying. Number two, number two. Nobody, Mr. Worthy.
After you spoke.
Yeah, right, I heard that crap before from you.
Did you know?
If this, if this continues, if this continues, then I have Michael, I'll have Michael to mute, to mute you all. This, this was not, this was comment, this was not a, this was not a discussion.
Okay.
Or this was not a, back, going back and forth, and here again. What, what is happening now is exactly what the public wants to hear.
I absolutely agree with that.
That's exactly what they, what they want to hear. So my, my thing is, don't give them, don't give them an opportunity.
I understand.
Okay, Worthy, Worthy, you can, you can, you can continue with your comments, but you, you asked a question, but this was a comment, this was a comment time.
Well, I asked to go in an executive session, and for some reason, we couldn't go in an executive session. So.
That's because, that's because, it's not because nobody wanted to hear you. It was because of technical, technical reasons, and I know that you can understand that.
Yes, ma'am, but it's a way you could do that. We could have, once we ended this session, we could have had another session or something. But anyway, it, it's fine. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm done.
Councilman Back.
Thank you, Madam President. Look at my notes here. I want to go back to Deborah Gaither and thank her and, and the EMA and for all that they did. She brought up an important comment, I think, that, you know, this is the first time to deal with something of this magnitude, of this coronavirus pandemic, and to have vaccines that have to be given out. And there's, you know, gosh, there's, there's not enough vaccines, and they're having to categorize who gets vaccines when, and, and there was, you know, it's just not easy to do. It, it's easy to sit back and complain when it doesn't go the way you want it to go, but it's, it's difficult when you're the one trying to do it for the, for the first time. So thank you to Deborah Gaither and the EMA and all of her team. All of our first responders, our healthcare workers, hospitals, or, I have a lot of friends that work in healthcare, they are just overly burdened, overly taxed. This has been a long run for this pandemic. So I, I really would like to ask everybody to just take a deep breath and to, and to try to calm down when it comes time to get shots and to look at things like, like that. Also, I didn't realize that Ronnie Watkins and Buffalo Wild Wings contributed. I did think they probably were impacted with the traffic. So, you know, obviously, our apologies go to the businesses that were impacted negatively. But a thank you for, it sounds like it all ended well. So thank you to the people at Ronnie Watkins. And I know Ronnie, Ronnie's a great community-minded person, a fine fella, and I'm sure he, he was doing all he could to make things run just as well as they could. So thank you to those folks. I've had a lot of calls on, from, about Public Works leaf debris pickup. And, you know, it's, there, there's two things that work. One is that the leaves are falling, I think they're about all gone. But we have two systems. One is like a big vacuum cleaner trucks that go around and, and suck up the leaves. And then the other is the big claw truck that comes and picks up limbs and couches or whatever else you have out there. When you combine those piles together, it creates a, a issue for the, for the pickup. Because one is like a vacuum cleaner, and one is, is where it's picking up and putting things in the back of the truck. So you're supposed to do that separately. And then also, there's just, there's, there's so much to do. And then you factor in COVID, people out sick, then you factor in laying off a hundred and fifty part-time employees. Then you add back to that the RSA changing the hourly, part-time hours from twenty-nine hours to nineteen hours. It's difficult to find someone that only wants to work nineteen hours. So there's a little bit of a struggle there. I think Public Works, Mike Hilton and all of his folks are doing all they can do. So if everybody will just kind of bear with us in that regard, I think that would be helpful. And then to talk about the elephant in the room, the rendering plant and the, and the process that, that the city has, has been going down. You know, there's a lot going on all at one time. There's obviously an opposition group that wants us to go ahead and vote now. And they want us to stop the rendering plant. Then there's another side that wants things to run down a, a path where there's the FAA, there's ADEM, there's the Gas and Airport Authority. They all have things that, that they need to do. And then the city council is typically presented with a, like a tax abatement, and that's when we would vote. So I understand the urgency that the opposition side is wanting to have us vote today or, or a month ago. Sometimes I don't understand why the rush, because it's, these other programs have not worked themselves out yet. And, and there's some other issues that are taking place and some other things, some that, I'm, I'm trying not to use the word process because we've been hammered for saying the word process. But, you know, Nick Saban has the process, and it works pretty well, seven national championships. You know, it's, it's, it's hard to please everybody, you know? And, and I cannot wait to see the comments that are scrolling over here on my screen that are probably making fun of me or, or doing whatever, you know? That's fine, if everybody wants to act like they're in junior high school, then they can do that. I get it. Maybe I'd be in that same crowd if I was an unelected official. But I am an elected official, so I'm trying to do things by the book, and I'm trying to do things a right way that not only looks at this rendering plant, but future opportunities for Gaston and Edgewahl County. And there is a future for Gaston and for Edgewahl County. But if we're not careful, we're gonna get the reputation for not working well with companies that want to come to our city and our county. And that's part of my hesitancy for jumping in and doing something a little bit quicker than is normally called for. I think everybody's gonna be pleased with the process and pleased with the outcome. It just needs to run its natural course. And, and we are the ones that are the elected officials, and we're being pressed by others to do things that aren't elected that causes me, gives me cause for concern. Everybody's welcome to have their opinion, and everybody's welcome to form their opposition. And that's fine, that's what makes our country great. But we're elected to do a job, and, and we're trying to do that job. And it's, and it's not an easy job to, but to begin with. And, you know, and I see the comments about if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. I can stand the heat, I'm in the kitchen. You know, the ones that aren't in the heat are the ones that are outside the kitchen telling those of us in the kitchen that we can't stand the heat. So let that sink in. Okay, so there, there's some challenges here. And, and you're seeing our city council kind of butt heads a little bit today. There's nothing wrong with that. That's, that's fine. But let us do our jobs, let us do what we were elected to do. And, and we'll move this city forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes, ma'am, I'll just say, you know, in general, I'm incredibly disappointed that, that I've, this has been kind of laid at our feet, and we didn't really get a chance to go through the process. I've said that before. You know, we didn't really get a chance to evaluate this. So now we're in a position where no matter what we do, everybody pretty much assumes that we were gonna do this until there was opposition. And I just want to say straight up that that's not the truth. And I'm confident that after all this stress on this council alleviates itself, we'll come together and make the right decision for this community. And I know a lot of people are worried about it, and all I can tell you is I don't think you should be. It's gonna be okay. The other thing I'll say with anger in my heart and righteous indignation is congratulations to the University of Alabama on another national championship. It pains me to say that with everything in my heart. But Alabama doesn't rate at the top of very many lists that you want to be on the top of. But I'll be darned if we don't have the best college football coach in the history of the game in the state of Alabama. So kudos to Nick Saban and all you Alabama fans, and you'll never hear me say that again. That's all I got, Madam President.
Councilman Cannon. Councilman Cannon.
Madam President? I'd just like to start by saying, this city, this state, this county, this whole nation needs prayers. I've been looking at the opposition to the rendering plant, some of the stuff they've been talking about. How they gonna get people to run for office and how they've got 8100 people on there. And I seen yesterday that somebody said like 2200 of them was only city, city residents, you know, Gaston, the way I understood it. I don't care if you got 100,000 people on there, or if you got a million people on there. That, you need to let this, and I'm gonna say process, and Mr. Jones or whoever wants to can put anything on little old clips about us. He wants to, it don't bother me. You know, one day in politics, and he might figure this out sometime. You'll be a hero one day in politics, and the next day you'll be a zero. I found that out in 16 years of being on the council here. But I've looked over that list some, that, that was on there, the opposing, the rendering plant. And I haven't seen a lot of people on there talk about prayer. They're not praying for the city council. They're not praying that the right decision happens. They're just up in the wind, hollering and carrying on, you know, and saying what they should do, who they're gonna get to run the mayor, who needs to be the mayor. You know, if you want to run for office, the best thing to do is pay your money when election time come and run. I mean, that's a freedom. You can do anything you want. You can run for any office as long as you live in the city of Gaston, in that district, or if you live in the city of Gaston, you can run for mayor. I mean, this is not a lifetime job up here. I could go on and on and tell you the things this council has done in the last 16 years. But nobody wants to hear what we've done. They just want to know what we haven't done. They want to complain and moan and groan, and they get me for saying I talk about their faith. I don't talk about their faith. I'm just trying to tell them I think we'd all be better off if we would start praying more. Pray for our cities, pray for our council, pray for this nation. We're in times right now like we've never been before in this country. We don't know what's gonna happen next right now. People just need to get on their knees and start praying for us. Pray for this nation, pray for our presidents, pray for everything that's going on here. Because this, in my 62 years, this is the roughest I've ever seen in my 62 years. And I think that's what we should be concentrating on. I know the rendering plant's gonna work itself out. Everything always works itself out for the good. But getting on the internet or Facebook or opposition page and saying they know what the council's doing, they've taken money, they're, they're gonna do this, they promised this, and they've got little letters or whatever papers they've got and send the council note about it. Well, all seven council members has told you what we know. And I just don't understand why that, you know, they wouldn't believe us. But hey, you can do what you want to for my part. If you want to run for District 6 next time. Or you want to run for any district. I advise you, go ahead and get your stuff ready. Get your $50 ahead. If you ain't got the $50, call me. I, I got some friends, I think Mr. Reed would probably let y'all borrow $50 or give you $50 to run. And I'd like to say, Councilman Worthy, we talked a while ago. And I was to the point that we all agreed on this council that we was gonna wait until after the A.D.M. hearing before we did anything, come out and said anything or did anything. And I don't know about the, what you was trying to get drawn up with Lee. Did you turn something in, in writing to Mr. Roberts?
Councilman Cannon, you're asking, you're asking a question, and you're supposed to be-
No, ma'am, I'm just, I'm not asking him a question.
Yes, I do.
I'm not asking him a question. I'm just asking. It's not a question. I'm just speaking what I want to speak. He's already had his term, Mr. President. I don't want to, I want this council to be unified, not tore apart. And that's what these people are trying to do, is tear this council apart, get them arguing about each other, talking about each other. And that's not right. I pray for these people every night to make sure that, you know, that we're going in the right direction. If everybody would do that, and I'm not questioning your faith, if you would just pray every night for this city, your officials, the nation, about this rendering plant, prayers can change things. I thank you, Mr. President, for letting me speak today. And I'm through.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, ma'am. I will talk about being fair. This council always comes together strong. We don't go behind each other's back. We let it be known to everybody, just like this 7-0 vote. At the time, it was 6-0. And then came on, that was, one came, came back on, that's good, that's 7-0. But when parties introduce or ask for a resolution in confidentiality, get that word, that is secret from the rest of us. And that's what I really didn't appreciate after I was told that we were 7-0 strong at the, and we made agreements. I'm gonna say that one more time. Confidentiality is secret. And I have the email to prove it. And I don't want to hear no more about it at all, no rebuttal. As far as Washington DC, I think it was probably one of the worst things that ever happened. But I also think that Portland, Oregon, Cincinnati, and Chicago are equally bad, where they burn the towns down. At least it didn't burn down the city up there at DC, however, four or five people did get killed, and that's an atrocity. And I'm not apologizing for, if I've said anything through the years that I ought to be sorry of, I'm glad of it. Because I give it no thought, I take it right off the top of my head. And if there's anything anybody wants to do about later, fine, I'm right here. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to offer condolences to Jackie, Jackie Ragland's family and Lorraine Curly DeRama's family. Both of them were educators. They worked in this city, and I also think, I also know that they have relatives here at City Hall, and also, I don't know her sister's name, but also condolences to Angie that's in the mayor's office who lost her sister just recently. So these are, these are people that we knew, and we'd just like to offer our condolences from the city council and from the city to the families and, you know, and pray that, that they would be comforted. Also, due to the Martin Luther King's holiday, and next Monday's garbage will be collected on Tuesday. And Tuesday's rot will be collected on Wednesday, and Thursday and Friday's rot will be picked up on schedule. And I know that there's a, a lot of things have been said, and I'm just glad that I don't see the emojis that are coming on across Facebook. But I would just like to concur with what, and got some information. I remember when, I think the lady came up here from the river. She came up here and she was supporting Charles Fabric on not wanting the rendering plant, but she said nothing about the violations about the water that he had been cited for in his company. And so a lot of people have come up here and talked to us. They've said things about us, and they will continue to say things about us, and that's, that's, that's okay with me. I just think that my living has been made. And I'm doing this partly as a service and for the community, and I agree with Councilman Cannon. That's our constitutional right to run for office. And if those people who want to run for office, they can run for office. And also, when they talk about money that's being taken, if you go on the website, you'll find out where the attorney that's also working for this, they have a 501(c) where they're taking up money so that they can help to fight this rendering plant. I believe there was one council meeting where we had a chicken up here, and we got a lot of chicken signs all over the city. So I just suggest to you that you need to check behind all those chickens and those chicken signs and see what's really going on in the city and what's really happening. I said a while back when I was on the council at the first that there were people outside of our city that's trying to run our city. And I've asked council members here and council members there, former. Have you all ever gone to the other city councils and tried to tell them how to run their council or run their city? And so we as council members have to stand up and run our own city to the best of our ability to do the things that are right. And I, I'll, I'll end this because it has just, when I say it has disturbed me, I pulled up a thing in 1956 where a president of another country, a dictator of another country, he made a statement. He said in 1956 that not a shot had to be fired in this country. That they wouldn't have to fire a shot in this country because we would destroy ourselves from within. And so that seems like what we're working on, and I would like to make sure that that doesn't come true. He said that our children were gung-ho ball and that they would not even have to fire a shot, but that we would destroy ourselves from within. And so you can see from last Wednesday, even right here in our city. Now I understand why certain groups were not coming and saying anything about jobs because, you know, evidently, money. So I tell everybody, follow the money, and you'll see what's going on. I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion is adjourned.